We're good.
Okay. Everyone rise for the pledge, please, and stand for a moment of silence. Pledge your name.
To the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Have a moment of silence for our deployed military, our EMS and first responders. Thank you. Okay. While you're doing that, I'm going to go ahead and start a couple of things. We just came from an executive session, which will go into more depth during the course of the meeting. The executive session was about two real estate matters and also the solicitor's opinion on the amusement tax ordinance. So we will be discussing that as the meeting continues. I wanted to take a couple of minutes. We've had multiple questions from the public and from our own council members about public comment about meeting, and that's what we're going to enter into is the public comment phase of the meeting. So I'll just say, welcome to the July Public Business Meeting of New Freedom Borough Council. We're about to begin the public comment portion, in which all members of the public can comment on items on the agenda for the meeting. Council welcomes public comments to help guide our decision-making, and you can approach any of us at any time. This introduction is based upon a compliant with federal law, PA law, new freedom ordinance, and has been reviewed by our solicitor. In prior meetings, we've had members of the public direct comments to other members of the public who were present in the meeting room. We have also had members of the public interrupt people who have the floor and are making their comments to council. Some members of council and our solicitor received complaints about misconduct. In addition, comments directed to the public rather than to the council and interruptions during the meeting interfere with the First Amendment rights of other members of the public, and they violate state law. The council meetings must be conducted in accordance with state law and thus respect the First Amendment rights of all persons attending the meeting. To ensure that our meetings comply with federal... I'm sorry?
Someone's mic is on.
I'm sorry?
Someone's mic is on. It's covering you up a little bit.
Okay. Someone's staticky. Anybody?
Yeah.
If anybody else is on, I think everybody is.
My mic, I hear the one is lit up there out there. Sorry. Thank you. Okay. To ensure our meetings comply with federal and state law, please know the following: Public comment periods during the meeting are limited public forums. That means council has the right to limit topics discussed to agenda items, and we can set time limits and limit the manner of speech, such as prohibiting comments directed to people other than members of council, and prohibiting a person from asking questions of people in the room other than elected or appointed officials. Council meetings are business meetings of the council. All comments and discussion must pertain to matters before council or to matters that are within the jurisdiction and authority of the council under the Borough Code. In our meetings, we impose the following rules by state and local laws. You must give your name and address. For the first public comment period, you must state the agenda item you are addressing. In the second public comment, you may address any topic that has to do with business that may be before council. You must limit your comments to no more than five minutes. You must direct your comments only to council. You may not address members of the public in the meeting room. You may not interrupt other people speaking who have the floor. You must speak in a tone appropriate for a business meeting, and the use of profanity or threats is prohibited. Anyone who disrupts a meeting, interrupts a speaker, or any way that presents them from continuing to speak, or otherwise disturbs or interrupts a meeting violates Title 18 of the Pennsylvania Crimes Code. These rights extend to the elected and appointed officials and to any member of the public. So if someone violates that and you are bothered by it, you can also raise that issue. Council meetings are recorded. Your comments and conduct are visible on the recordings, which are published on YouTube. The council does not restrict the right to express your views on matters that are the proper subject of public comment, and you are free to agree or disagree, and likewise you may disagree or agree with any of our decisions. Speaking outside the designated public comment period is not a legal right. If you have a comment outside of the public comment period, please raise your hand, and if time permits, the chair will call on you, or you may wait until the second public comment period. I hope that answers all the questions that people have asked. I apologize for taking the time to go through this. If anyone has any questions, I'll make copies of this available. And without further ado, we're open for public comment. On agenda items, yes? Anyone? Did you have a presentation tonight? No, I'm registered. Okay. Anyone? All right. Approval of minutes, regular meeting held June 9th. I would entertain a motion.
I move to approve the minutes of that meeting.
Second.
Motion in a second. Are there any corrections or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? My vote is aye. Approval of the Treasury report dated June 2025. I would entertain a motion.
Second.
I have a motion to approve the Treasury's report dated June 25. Second. Discussion, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Squamwater Channel on North Constitution. Are there any updates?
Yes. Mr. Biden, there are no updates on that. We're still waiting to close out that permit, and that has to go through the process.
Okay. Thank you. Paul Smith Library. Denny Cummings and Eric Ririk and myself went to a meeting, I think it was last week. Was it last week? Last week?
Monday.
Last Monday. And they have... It was a joint meeting between Paul Smith and Mason Dixon Library, and the consensus of the group was to write a letter and give a limited amount of time for the county commissioners to respond. And the general consensus from the group was that we would... The group would have to go public with the information that we've been discussing from week to week. I concur. I think everybody, everybody in the meeting concurred with that. There is very little chance of becoming an independent library and funding it ourselves. So we need something from the county commissioners or the state that says that they will participate in funding. Right now, current law does not allow that. So we're going to consider authorizing release of the July 25 allocation in the amount of $1,000. Obviously, Paul Smith is still operating and still using our funds. So I would entertain a motion to approve...
I make that motion.
Second. Motion in a second. Is there any further discussion, or does anyone have any questions about the last library meeting?
We're keeping what, $1,000 a month?
I believe so. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? My vote is aye. Solar energy facility decommissioning bond requirements?
Just one update there. We will have that in front of the Planning Commission, New Freedom Borough Planning Commission in August. So once they have time to review, hopefully their recommendation to council is for approval, and then we'll have that on the upcoming agenda for public hearing and council's final considerations.
Can anybody in the back hear that?
Yes.
Okay.
Could you skip the Treasury report?
No, no, you're approved. Okay. Amusement tax for NCR?
I move that we consider return of all the tax that was collected to Northern Central Railway.
Andrew, what was the amount of the tax?
I think it said 20... 28?
Yeah. The amount is $28,343.21.
And I'm sorry, what did we do last year on a percentage basis?
Did you hear that?
Last year, I believe, was 30%.
I believe so, too. I have a motion to return all of the tax to NCR. Do I hear a second? Okay. Motion felt due to lack of a second. We have considered an amusement tax ordinance modification or abolition. So the public is aware, the solicitor reviewed our amusement tax, and they reviewed it in light of rulings in Pennsylvania against a similar amusement tax, and he finds, and council agrees, that our amusement tax is constitutional. Are there any judgments if that's what you found? Do I have any other discussion or motions considering the amusement tax for Northern Central Railway at this time?
I make a motion for... A modification. So it's currently 5%. I make a motion for modification of it to 2.5%. In a sense, mirroring what we've given back in the past. At times, it's been 30%. I think at other times, it's been 50%. I don't like the back and forth. I don't...
Just to be clear, what you'd be doing is you'd be instructing council or the borough manager to prepare an ordinance to be advertised with that change.
So I still don't think that this is applied fairly. I've said this before. I'm not going to beat a dead horse at this again. But so my motion would be for boroughs to have prepared ordinance to have 2.5%.
Is there a second to that yet?
There's not a second. I was just going to ask, is there a second? I'll second it. Is there any discussion?
I guess for the discussion part, like this, again, at least somewhat or closely mirrors what we've done in the past. My hope, at least in the future, would be that this is what it is until we can either change the actual amusement tax or abolish it in the future, and then this would hopefully prevent or get rid of the need or the feeling of having to come and ask for funds back, I think.
So this is only going to help next year?
I feel that I am having this changing the ordinance. It's changing the ordinance.
Yeah. So it would be going from 5 to 2.5.
Not helping this year. What I'm saying is...
Right. You're right. It's not helping this year.
We would have to make, if we're going to give money back, we'll act on this, but then we'd have to make another motion to give money back.
That would be correct. My only comment, we have a motion in a second. My comment would be that when we asked NCR about whether or not they wanted the tax to go away or even be decreased, they actually said no.
Because it, yeah, it doesn't affect their bottom line.
Well, it doesn't affect their bottom line, and I think, and you could correct me if I'm wrong, Bob, but I think that this goes by us giving back 30% or some amount. It goes a long way to showing that we're supporting NCR and what they do for the community, and it goes a long way for them to go out to get other grants if they can say, hey, you know, New Freedom Borough is supporting us by giving us this money back. Am I correct in that, Bob?
Yes.
We note in several grants that we apply for, we note New Freedom Borough as a partner and a supporter in Explore York Grants and our state grants, the America of PA 250 grant we just received. So we note you as a partner and a supporter in the community and the borough.
And the money we've received back in the past, we've used to run reduced tickets for shirt events, in particular Freedom Fest. This year, we're planning on having $10 rides, which allows a lot of the people in the town that cannot afford our regular ticket prices for those kids and families to be able to get a train ride.
What's the regular price? So what a discount are they getting?
A normal ticket for a Bonrac Express is $28.
Okay. And you're charging 10?
During New Freedom Fest.
Is that... Do you check to see if they're a resident, or is it anybody?
It's anybody, but we don't, we don't know how it is. You don't need a real ID to get on our train.
Andrew, take your shoes off. No, you have to have shoes on.
So I point this out because I think, I think that's the reason they don't want us to make the tax go away. So if we voted to decrease the tax by half, I think they would rather see us give them 30% back in support.
Then let me, let me ask...
I'm not, I'm not trying to talk you out of your motion. I just want to point that out in the way of discussion.
That's a good point. I think it's valid. So how do we then go back to the first point that we, that we did not vote for, like correctly in the meeting? How do we go back to that to make another motion for that?
Well, we just make another motion.
Well, you could modify, you could modify your, you could modify your current motion
All right. I'm just, I don't want to modify. I want to get rid of it. I want to pull that back, and then I want to go revisit the first part, the considered return.
I'll pull back my 10.
Okay. Well, we can't go back to the return. We already...
No. My motion was to give it all back. We can make a motion to do something other than all.
Yeah. We can still go back to that, correct?
Yes.
All right. So then I'm going to change my motion to be to return 30% like we did last year.
A second there.
Is there any discussion on that motion?
Just for clarification, Ryan, you're rescinding your motion for 28%. Like Dave agreed to rescind that second.
Correct.
Okay. So we're back to considering return of the 2024 tax, and your motion was to return 30%.
Correct.
The tax would remain at 5%. Any discussion?
Going, going back to 2012, this amusement tax, the council discussed this tax as a way to help defray expenses associated to steam and history impact on the borough infrastructure. Residents came in 2012 with concern of safety, property value, impacting communities, so forth. Council advised those residents that they're aware of their concerns and that they would consider them going forward. In 2013, the council talked about establishing this 5% tax on admission or ticket prices because of the traffic congestion, parking, emergency service involvement, et cetera. Council noted that the tax revenue would be utilized to offset costs for street maintenance, parking lot repairs, emergency services, et cetera. So it was clear back from this council in 2012 and 13 that this money was to be used for the influx that would be coming into our community. When the train was here last month, representatives, they discussed that they bring 20,000-plus people a year to our community, and 55% or more of those people come from outside of York County. This is a pass-through to the 55% of the people that don't even live in our community that are coming here. So by giving back 30% of that, you're now asking the citizens of New Freedom to pony up 30% to cover the people that are coming here to use our infrastructure, our community, and whatever else they're using here. You're wanting them to take their tax dollars now to cover that. So I don't see how that is appropriate when it's not the train that's coming up with this money. That tax is being paid by the person that buys the ticket, and to offer the reduced ticket during special events, that's just, again, asking the citizens to pony up their tax money to cover some reduced tickets for special events for people, again, coming into our community. I think there was a clear referendum here with the voting residents of our community. They were not happy with where the tax increases have went over the past five years. I think they spoke very clearly, and this is, this is not good. This is not good. I, I think that New Freedom should keep their 28,000, and we decide how that money is going to be spent on the infrastructure and so forth for our community instead of giving it back to spend on tickets for people that don't live here, as well as I think the train has also said in the past that they'll do improvements in our community, and that's great, but let's hold on to our 28,000. Let's decide what improvements are being done within our community.
You're forgetting that the railroad brings in revenue to the community, and we, indirectly into the, into the borough.
But it also costs us tax dollars because we just spent how many hundreds of thousands putting in new crosswalks, basically because of NCR and...
No, we didn't. You keep saying that.
That's not true.
We did not put in new...
The crosswalks were put in as part of the Heritage Rail Trail.
What he said.
And in addition to...
They were, but mainly because of the old train station previous to them purchasing...
And you misspoke when you said about the borough spending. All of that money that was spent on those crosswalks was either ARPA money, or it was grant money received from the County of York.
Well, ARPA money is money we could have used for something else. Am I correct? Yes.
But that's not what you said. You said the money was...
You weren't even here when that whole thing started, Andrew, with, about the crosswalks because of NCR being where they were and the danger involved in people that were getting hit by cars because people weren't stopping, you know? When people...
There were buses coming in.
Now, you know, I've had complaints by Mr. Sarpan when he's walking his dogs. He has to have a crosswalk. So I mean, you know, there's, I think the crosswalks have to do with...
There's a lot of people using a crosswalk. When I'm down there walking the dog, either they're walking their own dog, they're walking, they're jogging, they're riding, like every day, and we're down there every day.
I agree now that they're a business from Berkin team coming, that has come in, but I think that one of the primary reasons was we had buses coming in, which I don't think we're having as much of now. There were problems with the buses. We have a municipal lot that people getting on the train use.
They hardly ever use that municipal lot for the train.
They do not. Signs were put up within the last year directing them to use that lot.
They do not use it though.
That lot is where they're turning their turnpike.
They park along, across from the hole and stuff like that.
How many people usually...
Using part of the structure.
Please. Let me ask the question then. How many people, on an average, are on a train?
On average?
Yeah.
Our average right now is about 80 people.
So there's 80 people. You're talking, same, they come for, it's 20 cars, and it's got to be more than that. So 30 cars. There isn't 30 places downtown that they can park. They have to use the municipal lot. I watch them.
Can I comment on that? Is that okay?
Yeah. Give me a minute. I watch them from my deck walk down from the municipal lot all the way to the train station and back. So, you know, I know they're, they're utilizing that, and that was one of the primary reasons that it was discussed that we put in a crosswalk back in 19... Or 2020. I just think it's, it has cost us a lot of money also, and a lot of headaches for people. I know people that lived on Front Street that moved because of the smoke and the noise from the train, you know? I think that there's, that tax helps us to...
No. That's absolutely not true.
It absolutely is true. They're home and they were moving because of it.
Don't make me do it.
You can. I have the floor.
No, you don't. You've just been talking repeatedly, and now I'm trying to, I'm trying to answer a question. Now, this is the council.
You can interrupt me, but nobody can interrupt you.
All right. Finish.
I'm finished.
All right. Number one, the tax does absolutely nothing to stop the smoke from pouring into the houses along Front Street. The tax does nothing to stop people from parking along that, in front of the houses along Front Street. The tax does help with the parking lot repair and with the street repair, but again, the streets, we get liquid fuels tax because the streets are used by everyone. They are public streets. We can't say people can't use, use the streets. So unless you want to ban the train, you know, let's get back to the topic, which is, which is the, which is the tax. Now, we just went through, and you said that the tax, you know, 30% is being paid by the citizens of New Freedom, but it's not because, as you said, it's a pass-through tax, and it's paid by whoever is riding on the train during that period. So that 30% that you're giving back is to help NCR, and I'm not advocating one way or another, but I am telling you for a fact that that 30% helps NCR get grant money from the state and from other... from the state and from other organizations in order to decrease their costs of doing business. And that's why they've been so adamant that they do not want the tax to go away, but they want to be able to show some support from New Freedom Borough and that's what the thirty percent ask is all about.
Where does that money come from when you write the check thirty percent to go back?
Originally, it comes from
No, 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 no. Where is that money gonna come from when you write the check to have thirty percent go back?
It comes from the ticket sales.
No, it doesn't. No, no, it doesn't. Where is it coming from?
Well, the money went into the general fund.
It's coming out of the general fund, the taxes that the people pay. It's the people's money. So you're saying you have thirty percent back out of the general fund. Who is gonna make that up? Where where is that money gonna come from? It's that you're gonna have to, what, you're gonna increase taxes again? We're gonna go up more than forty three percent in the last six years?
Well, if you didn't
When does it ever end?
If you didn't have the train, you wouldn't have the twenty eight thousand dollars that came in. So what
And you wouldn't be able to keep. But you have the train. You have the train. It's here. This is the people's money. Taking money out of that general fund, it's going to need being replaced somehow. That is the people's money. Asking the people to subsidize over fifty five percent of the riders of that train is not right.
Well, again, I understand what you're saying, saying it's the people's money, but it's the people's money because they charged five percent tax on the ticket. So the money went in from that. You're giving the thirty percent out of that money. That money was earmarked coming in and it would be earmarked going out. So yes, it's in the general fund right now, but giving it back to them is giving them less money, less than five percent on the ticket sale. So that's where the money is coming from.
But like Erica said, that money is coming into the account. That is, we're taking that into accord when we do our budget that we have, that that money is there. That money's in the budget. So it it does, like she said, it has to be replaced with something because it's part of our budget, annual budget.
Out of thirty six boroughs in York County, New Freedom is one of the highest indebted boroughs in York County. This is the exact reason why. Spending such as this throughout the year brings in a deficit equalling forty three percent tax increases over five years with the surrounding municipalities around us, zero. You had people run in the last election on fiscal responsibility. This is not
You're done now. You're done.
Done.
You are done because now you're campaigning.
I have campaigned.
Address the issue.
I am.
No, you're not.
Absolutely. By the tax increases that the surrounding municipalities around us have not done, we have because of decisions like this
So this issue directly affects what the surrounding municipalities are doing on their taxes?
Absolutely. They're physically responsible. Absolutely.
I have a motion and I was thinking to give thirty percent back on the, I'm gonna, I I request that the council
Call the question.
For a vote. I have a motion.
Question, you need three quarters of vote.
Well, we vote on that.
No, you need three quarters of the council to vote to call the question.
No, you don't. I made the motion.
Yes, you do.
I made the motion. And he calls for the vote.
Anytime you call the question, it takes three quarters of the council to approve the call.
Alright, can I get a a vote on whether or not to call the question? All in favor? Need to vote the hand votes, I can see.
Andy, how do you wanna get this in the the notes? Do you want names?
Yeah, I mean, if you can, it it really should be a verbal, but
Alright.
Why don't we just do a roll call?
Okay, go ahead. Start with Danny.
What what do we recall? Now, is this the vote or
Whether or not to take a vote.
Whether or not to take a vote.
Yeah, let's take a vote. That was yes from Dennis.
Yes, Dave.
I see a yes from Brenell.
Yes, from Andy.
No.
Yes.
No.
Someone's gonna have to do the math.
That's three quarters.
That's three quarters. Okay. All in favor of returning thirty percent of the money that is paid from the ticket sales to borough taxes, say aye.
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 All opposed, say no.
No.
That was also Dennis Sarp with a no.
My vote is aye. Okay. New business. Consider approval of an option to purchase real estate agreement. Is that the first one or the second one or both?
Uh, this is the option.
I'm sorry. Um, okay, we have an option to purchase real estate agreement. This is for this is for one East Franklin Street and its property ID seventy eight dash zero zero dash zero one dash zero two zero two. It's point two one of an acre. And the purpose of this option to purchase is to obtain an option on the land and the building and then use the time of the option to determine whether or not the borough can obtain grant money that would make it a net zero to demo the building. If we cannot obtain financing, we can let the or cannot obtain the grant money to do this, then the option on the building can just be released and not exercised. Something right there, I don't know.
Yes.
Does anyone have any questions on this?
We're gonna make
Would anyone like to make a motion on this?
How do you want that worded?
I'm sorry?
How do you want that worded? Just for the
Um, approve the option.
Make a motion for the approval of the
Present it to the owner. Motion to approve the option to purchase real estate and have it presented to the owner. Is there any discussion?
What's your return on investment on this property?
I'm sorry, again.
What's your return on investment on the property?
There is no return on investment on the property. I'm sorry.
Public, I think it's I think it's public health, welfare and safety because that building's gonna fall down. And we need to do something about a condemned building in our business history for the citizens.
Is that the question?
Yeah, so you're gonna invest money in this. Is this money budgeted to be able to do this?
It won't be till next year.
It won't be till next, yeah.
So we just took thirty percent. Now we're gonna take more money not budgeted.
No, we we next year so we would be able to put it in next year's budget. Yeah, it's eight hundred and seventy five dollars.
Not the total so far.
The total, the total would be eight hundred and seventy five dollars. Of course, there is there's deep prep and that kind of cost. But right now, we're approving, we're approving, offering eight hundred and seventy five dollars for a month or a month to month option that would expire in December. Anything else?
I don't see how you're gonna get a return on investment properly.
No, there is no return. There is no calculation, return on investment on a condemned property. The actual appraised value of the property is a negative eighty thousand dollars or so.
The borough to step in to this is something responsibility and liability as well.
We're not unless, you know, what we're doing is trying to take away the life, the health, as the mayor said, the health and safety and welfare of the citizens into account and stop a tragedy from happening before it occurs because
If that building falls into the creek, we're the ones that are gonna be hit by DEP.
Set on fire too.
Right. Have it set on fire. It's it's a liability. The whole thing is a liability, which I think we're responsible to take care of that liability for the general public and the residents.
There's no indication that the owner can do anything with it, right? He's not gonna take it down. He's not gonna approve it.
No, he's not gonna do anything. It's just the Anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
My vote is aye. Consider approval of application for payment number four in the amount of two hundred and thirty four thousand one hundred and fourteen dollars and twenty four cents to PSI Pumping Solution for REX One Aeration Upgrades. I'm sorry. Yes, ma'am.
I'm aware that Chief Boyer is here to give a report.
Oh, when did he come in?
A while ago. I I With the approval of council, can we interrupt in the proceedings and allow chief to report so that he can get back to for things that need to be done? Any objections?
Nope. Thank you, Frank. Sorry. Sorry for the delay of response.
You can hit that microphone on if you want.
Alright. Sorry for the delay of response. It's on my way up here. We gotta hit for a structural fire, so. So just real quick, the stats for the month of June are fifty three calls total. Forty two of those were fire responses, eight EMS responses and two duty officer calls. Average turnout time was two minutes and thirty seconds. First duty on scene time is eight minutes and that's it for the statistics. And then I just kinda wanted to give everybody the update on the ladder truck ordeal here. So the department sent the five council or my council, sorry, the committee members down to the manufacturing plant down in Florida in regards to ladder truck construction build. We want to hear some of the statistics for that truck and then whatever some of the fine to, you know, design things of the truck and what have you. Everything's underway. Well, it's still looking like it's gonna be the fall of twenty twenty eight when the truck gets completed and finished. And then this fall, we're going to discuss some draft options for that truck continuing on. Again, I just wanted to say that we again really appreciate the support from you guys on this process because without you guys, it wouldn't be possible. So again, thank you guys very much for that. And that is all I have for you.
Any questions for Chief Boye? Stay safe.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Okay, um, this has already been approved. This is a payment on, it's payment number four for the pumping solution. So would you obtain a motion?
Motion to pay the contract application number four.
Second. I'm sorry?
Motion to pay the contract application to payment number four. That was Dennis Sarp, if you couldn't hear.
Brenell second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? My vote is aye. Consider approval of the letter of intent to DCED for implementation of recommendations from the fire study.
Make a motion for the approval of the letter of intent to DCED. No second.
Motion in the second. Is there any discussion?
Did we, council did a copy of that letter? Was it? Okay.
In the email package.
I answered our questions. I've read through this all a couple of times, seen the recommendations. I hate a lot of them. They're already doing. And my question was that, first of all, it was called by Shrewsbury Township that doesn't even have a fire department. And if they wouldn't get into fire protection, they should've gotten into it a long time ago. I know John Center. I've known him ever since before he was a lieutenant. And John is a good man. He's a good chief. But he comes from an area, he was chief of York City. I don't know if he'd ever responded to a wildfire in Southern Baltimore County in the middle of the night. And they have talk about water supplies years ago, back in the seventies when I was active. We had tanker shuttles. We had planned for all these things. And now, you know, we need somebody other than the members of the fire company making decisions for us. I think it just takes fire protection out of our hands, puts it into somebody else's hands and eventually it'll say, oh, well, we need a new station up here in northern Shrewsbury Township. When I just went to a meeting a couple of months ago where the intent of Shrewsbury Township is to preserve its land from sprawl or development. To me, I think it's a, you know, a waste of money.
I think it was said that the funding for this would be provided, correct?
Further study.
The study. And the study doesn't obligate you to implement the fire means, correct?
That is correct.
The description of the letter of intent here says implementation of recommendations. It says description of project, implementation of recommendations in the Southern York County Public Fire Protection Period of Your Study dated January twenty twenty five. It doesn't say some, it doesn't say maybe, it says implementation of recommendations. A lot of it is is fine, like Dennis says, sounds like they're, you know, doing a lot of it already. The part, you know, that we went to a meeting a month ago at the township about this development plan over the next twenty years. They talked about a centralized place. It also talks about it here. While the existing system of fire response appears to provide an adequate level of protection to municipalities working collectively with fire companies should plan to engage in a regional regional fire protection master plan in the near future as well as joint emergency services project with Springfield Township, increased traffic on Susquehanna Trail eighty three, growth in northern Shrewsbury Township may justify an emergency service station in that area. They were talking about consolidating. Getting rid of the police in twenty eighteen didn't go over well. Go ahead and tell the people of New Freedom that their fire department is gonna be consolidated miles down the trail and how that's gonna be better for them when we put in an MMO for, you know, a lot of money for this wonderful new arrow that we just heard about. Shrewsbury Borough didn't even do this letter of the tent. They just had their meeting last week. There needs to be some conversation. People need to to get together to talk, not just to lay this on here and say we're gonna do the implementation of the recommendations in here. I do not know the, which is a fire company. I'm all for discussion. You know, this was talking about maybe doing something with Shrewsbury Borough and New Freedom, you know? Yeah, that sounds great, but when you're talking about taking it all the way down to northern a township, absolutely absolutely not. The people of New Freedom busted their backs to build the firehouse and EMS that we have here today. And this puts it in jeopardy, just like the the library used to be in New Freedom. It moved from New Freedom and it moved over to Paul Smith. Now it's looking to be moved from Paul Smith and possibly completely axed. You're walking down the road to disaster of of this. And I am a hundred percent for maintaining the level of service that we have here at New Freedom, but consolidating it with Springfield Township or, you know, let them go get their own. Let them go fund their But consolidating it with Springfield Township, or, you know, let them go get their own, let them go fund their own, we funded our own.
No. Andy, what, what does this put us on the hook for?
Yeah, and I, you know, I, I understand the concerns there, I just want to point out, in, in the second paragraph of Todd's email there, towards the bottom, it just kind of breaks down that this is just for John to assist with some of those recommendations. It's not necessarily saying they're all going to be implemented. Each recommendation, even if it does move forward, would have to be considered by every single municipality and, and the fire companies individually. So, you know, there are some good things, but there are some things that council has concerns about, those can be discussed. But I, I don't think this isn't setting anything in stone, so just to try to help implement some of the recommendations or, you know, if they all come up and you decide to vote individually and nothing gets hurt, then, nothing's hurt. This is no financial obligation to New Freedom Borough or the other municipalities, this is going to be funded by DCED. And it's just a continuation of those discussions that, that are mentioned.
I agree, that's what it says, that's what Todd says, not all recommendations may be acted upon, each will be done individually. What I'm signing here says, description of project, implementation of recommendations of Southern York County, doesn't say some, maybe all, none, it says implementation.
Yeah, and I, I think that's a fair rebuttal to the wording that's in that letter of intent. If council is more comfortable with maybe changing that wording up a little bit, I don't think that's anything that would cause any heartache with the other ones. Again, the goal of the project is to just continue those discussions to work towards potential implementation of any of those recommendations, not to set them instead. So maybe that's just a little, the wording maybe just needs to be cleaned up in that little bit.
I want to hear from.
Can you take our concerns back to Todd and have it rewritten and re-presented at the next month's meeting?
Yeah, I mean, why don't, why don't we just, if council's okay with it, we'll just table it for now. And we'll go back with the mentioned concerns for further discussion and then bring it up at the August meeting.
I agree.
Is there additional concerns? And I'd also like, I wish I would have thought about this when Chris was here.
I know.
I'd also like to have representation from fire, from EMS, or both, or, or whatever, to hear.
They've been, they've been in all the meetings, but yeah, you're right. I think, I think the one thing, the one summary is, is pretty much Shrewsbury and Rose both said at the, at the meetings that led up to this letter is that we're not there yet. We're okay, I mean, you know, they, they basically were saying that our volunteers were faltering, and we're not there yet. We, we have a good fire camp going on, we have people coming in, we have new volunteers, so yeah, we're not there yet. So, but yeah, I, I don't disagree with continuing the study and the discussions, but yeah, I agree with Erica, that this, this looks like it oversteps.
Can I say something too? I, I agree with Danny and Erica on this one because, because they're right. I mean, we just made our, our fire department, it's much better than most, and we have a good, you know, EMTs and everything is really. Sorry, and it sort of almost sounds like they're talking like they're getting into regional.
Well, they are, but again, I think both fire companies said, we're not there yet.
Man, that's, that would, that would be a severe cost if we got to that step.
So, I think we have a motion and a second on the table. Can we withdraw those, or are you amicable to withdrawing your motion and second? Do we have a second? Do we have a motion? I thought we did. I think we don't.
You know, Ryan made the motion.
Yeah, I don't have a probable, I, I, I don't have a motion.
And then, I can't remember who seconded it. But we will, we will table this then and look at it again in August. Agreed?
Is it okay for me to communicate with, with Todd and the other municipalities then, our concerns or council's concerns about that wording and what we want to see come out of the, anything moving forward?
Absolutely.
Was there, was there, was there other concerns that we can get them on the record now?
It was that topic consolidation and moving and losing, and, you know, our people worked hard. That's not going to benefit our community to have it down the road.
Okay, I'll, I'll pass that information on, thank you.
Guess we more or less did it by consensus, but all in favor of tabling to August, please say aye.
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 Posed? My vote is aye. Consider authorizing purchase of a 2025 John Deere backhoe from Grove Tractor and Equipment in the amount of one fifty-one-nine, one hundred fifty-one thousand nine hundred. Replaces the nineteen eighty-seven backhoe and partially funded from DEP grant of sixty-eight thousand two fifty. The balance of the money has been.
Make a motion for the approval of the 2025 John Deere backhoe, the one fifty-one-nine.
Second. Motion and second discussion?
I did have a question, I guess you're Jake, is there, what's the right word, implements, tools that are used, like buckets that we can take from what we have to the new one, or is it all just different?
It's all different, I have, well, it's maybe compared back, our buckets will fill it, but the way that things change.
So the, the standard has changed?
Yeah, I made sure of that when I called to the gentleman about putting stuff on here.
I have a question too, how about, we'll put the old one on municipal, is that correct?
Yes.
And the, and the parts that go with it?
Yeah, yeah.
Accessories?
Yeah, the two buckets, well, spare, spare bucket on the back.
Okay, gotcha.
Yeah, I don't want to go on municipal.
We, we have any idea what that might be worth?
It depends on who's been on.
God, yeah, I know.
It's nineteen eighty-seven, you can get a farmer that wants it, you can get an excavator that, you know, somebody that wants to tanker around with something, it's an option, so it all depends on the people that want it.
I understand, thank you.
I just want to clarify that that won't be listed on municipal until the new one is obtained. And council will have final approval of the sale of the existing backhoe.
How many man-hours does I have on it, do you know Jake?
How many hours?
Yep.
I, I don't know how many hours off the top of my head. I don't want to speak, but it's got quite a few for a nineteen eighty-seven, I mean, it's.
I was going to say, were you born yet?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm born. I want to say like every four thousand hours, but don't quote me on that. I'm, like I said, off the top of my head, I don't know. I can't compare with that, but I can get that to it.
So how much liquid accessories and so forth, the buckets, and so it's not just one cost?
It's included.
Yeah, all in here, backhoe bucket cylinder.
That price has the two-foot bucket on the back, one-foot bucket on the back. It will have a four-in-one bucket up front with the availability to have the hydraulics. That if we wanted to put a snow pile on it, that we could, but it'd have to be down the road.
We're never going to have snow again. That'd be fine.
So, this is a lot of money for, for, you know, people run tractors, fifty-year-old, you know, nineteen thirties tractors, whatever, you know? What, what is wrong to replace this tractor?
We spent quite a bit of money on it the other year because things broke down. Prior to that, every time we took it out, we were replacing hydraulic hoses. It leaks hydraulic oil from every orifice, from every cylinder on it. And at two o'clock in the morning, on a water leak, if I can't start it, we're hand digging with a shovel.
What's the maintenance schedule on that then, if it's, that leaks?
We may need it, that's the way things are. It's, it's a forty-year-old piece of equipment.
That is a lot of, I'm sorry, a lot of expense to maintain a piece of equipment like that?
Yeah, some seals and stuff to abandon and to nail and replace, the parts are obsolete.
But it doesn't run more than six hours a month?
It's the idea that it's there and it starts when we need it, same way as that ladder truck at the fire department, that is, you have to.
It's emergency equipment, basically.
Millions of dollars on ladder truck. But anytime I come here and I ask for a piece of equipment, you give me the hardest time ever.
Well, you come with no business case, you don't come with estimates, you don't know how many hours.
I'm going to ask you a question, did you approve the 2025 budget? Did you vote yes to approve the 2025 budget?
What does that have to do with any?
Because it was already budgeted.
Yes, because that money was taken to, to form a new capital fund that I did not vote for, because all that money came out of the general fund, hence the forty-three percent tax increase.
All right, let's, let's, let's stop, let's stop.
I'm having a discussion, we keep taking money from the general fund, that's, that's what I'm here to talk about.
How am I supposed to fix the infrastructure if I don't have a piece of equipment that's reliable to do the job?
Well, I don't know that it is or it isn't, because somebody made the decision that it's reached, it's past its useful life, but I don't have information on it.
It was a consensus, and we, I mean, it was, yeah, just because you don't have that information doesn't mean that it's not, that it's not, that it's not good.
Well, I don't like to make decisions blindly, maybe others do, but to, to make an educated decision, I like to have all the information, and I don't have.
That's why you're paying me, that's why you're paying Andrew the money that we get, to make the educated decisions for you, to come to you and say, hey, we need this piece of equipment. I'm not just going to go blow smoke up your rear end and tell you, I need a new backhoe because, well, Shrewsbury Borough got one. I'm telling you that this is a piece of equipment that we need. And regardless, if it ran four hours a month, it's there. At two o'clock in the morning, I'll sharpen a ground shovel and I'll knock on your door and ask you to come help out.
Thank you for your comments. Is there any other discussion on this most necessary piece of equipment? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed?
No.
My vote is aye. Consider approval of a resolution authorizing the acquisition of land for stormwater maintenance. This was the other item that we discussed in the executive session. I guess we have all the attachments, that's okay. This is for the Ashley Court Development. It's basically a taking of open space and a stream bed which allows us to continue maintenance of the stormwater channel in that area. The, there is no HOA, there is no developer any longer in existence. And this resolution would allow the taking of open space, and then we would maintain that for our stormwater maintenance system. I would entertain a motion somewhere along those lines.
I'll make a motion for the approval of the resolution authorizing the acquisition of land for stormwater maintenance on Ashley Court.
Thank you.
Do you have a second?
Have a second, is there any other discussion?
This is also for some stream channel improvements, right, definitely is needed for that.
Right, that would allow us to make this, without having an easement, allow us to make those improvements in the, in the stream channel.
That's lot fifteen in the resolution.
So you're taking this by eminent domain?
Yes.
And how come you just don't do an easement, why are we still responsible for the property?
Who are you posing a question to? Do I take that, Andrew, or do you want me?
I'm sorry, I, I didn't quite hear the question.
She wants to know why we don't just put in an easement on the properties required, as opposed to taking responsibility for the properties?
There's no entity available to grant an easement, Altieri Enterprises is the owner of the land, and they are no longer in existence. And in fact, they're no longer authorized to do business in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. So, there's, there's no entity that is able to contract.
You're good. Thank you. Does that answer your question, or?
There's no entity, then how do you, you just say a jar is now?
Pretty much, yeah.
We're following the procedure that the law provides in this situation. This isn't the first time, so, you know, through the eminent domain process, it allows the Borough to acquire ownership of real estate and then make the improvements to the stream bed, to the stormwater management on, and the maintenance of the open spaces.
These are not buildable properties, they're.
More right now, because that can be changed.
It could, it could be changed.
And we have to do the requirements because of stormwater and the grants that were done?
Certain this include MS four, Andrew? Does that have a lot to do with MS four?
An addition to the project that we're looking at, which is a stream restoration project extending from Pleasant Avenue north towards Railroad Borough. And this parcel is at the end of that project. So would add a, you know, quite a few additional linear fleet feet to that project. And again, that's all setting the groundwork for upcoming MS four requirements. In addition, the stormwater basin is obviously not being properly maintained because there's nobody to maintain it. So, that would be, acquiring that parcel would allow us to make sure that that stormwater basin is doing its job and providing any kind of storm relief to that development. Anything else outside of that is just open space and it would continue to be that. There, there's not really any buildable area, which is why those lots are open space to begin with.
What's the stormwater cost?
There's no, that, that project is just in development at this point, so there's no final cost to that project. And again, I'll stress it that under the MS four regulations, again, that, that draft permit is out right now for comment by the public. You won't have a choice, you won't be required to implement some kind of measure to reduce, to reduce sediment, to reduce volume, to reduce nitrogen phosphorus, whatever that permit has in it. Whatever New Freedom Borough is going to be required to do, we're not going to have an option. So, we're just trying to be proactive, trying to lay the groundwork so that we have a project that's ready to go, and we're not struggling in that five-year period to try to find a project to meet those requirements.
And I, I, can I point out too, Andrew, that it's actually the Borough's responsibility to take on stormwater basins. I mean, normally that is done when a development is finished, the Borough takes on the stormwater basin. And in this case, there is nobody to, to even, to even transfer.
Yeah, it is a mix, sometimes you have HOAs take them over, but that's when a developer actually set up an HOA. Sometimes the developer is responsible for the life of that development. They, they set up other arrangements, and other times it's turned over to the Borough, as you said, or the municipality. So there, there's different circumstances there, in this case, it was to be maintained, but that. but that individual, that business is defunct, bankrupt, and there's really nobody to go after to try to enforce any kind of regulation. In addition, the properties have potential future value to the borough as far as stormwater improvements.
What's the boss who acquiring this land?
I'll defer to the solicitor for that.
You said four thousand dollars?
Yeah, there's a, statutorily, there's usually a right for a property owner to obtain money to be reimbursed for any engineering or attorney fees that incur up to four thousand dollars. So you could potentially have that. There's probably not going to be a purchase price for it because the land doesn't have a market value based on its use.
Well, it really doesn't have an owner, right? Because they're out of business and not allowed to do business in Pennsylvania.
Right.
So there's nobody to really pay.
It's a complicated situation, but it's like, you know, I think basically the cost you're going to incur is the cost of the acquisition itself. Legal fees and filing fees and perhaps the engineering.
What's the maintenance monthly on the land?
Well, there is, there is, this, I guess what I want to say is this is the borough's, it's what we do. It's our job. This is, this is what we do. We're going to maintain stormwater area and this is part of what the borough has to do. I mean, there's no one else to do it. You can't go to a homeowner and say, why don't you guys all get together and maintain this stormwater basin? They're not going to do that. So this is something that the borough, acting as a borough, would normally do.
If you're taking it by eminent domain, what, is it, now you have to mow this area? What is the upkeep of this area?
I would imagine there's some mowing involved. Andrew, are you, address?
Yeah, I mean, obviously, the stormwater channel itself, there would be very limited maintenance once that project's complete. The basin does need some areas cleaned up, so there would be an initial cost to rectify that area and clean it up. A lot of the other parcels are just basically open space. You know, and at that point, you can pretty much just mow the edges and the rest would stay open. And when I say edges, I'm just talking about towards the road and the sidewalk.
It's kind of like what you do on, was it Leader Road?
Correct, right, yeah. Are there other reasons for that? You know, we have property, well, we're just maintaining the edge, but the rest is exactly what it's supposed to be, open space.
So not knowing the cost, it hasn't been budgeted for to do this?
Would, Andrew, let me, may I ask a question here? Wouldn't that be something that our public works would be a part of handling? Andrew?
Yes, yes, that's correct, I'm sorry.
There really is no additional cost other than what we're already paying above the quarters.
Right.
Now, the cost of purchases?
It's their time to maintain the edge, just like they are now.
Now, any cost to purchase this and store all this stuff? Has this been budgeted for to do all of this?
Budgets it, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, yeah. Erica, that has not been defined in a line item for this year's budget, no.
Kind of at the root of this issue is that the neighborhood was not set up correctly because they didn't have this plan in place. They didn't have an HOA to take care of. Like you said, there's a mix of who does what in New Freedom. And I think when I, when we talked about this a couple of weeks ago, you said that there are things in place now to prevent something like this from happening in the future. Is that correct?
Yeah, I mean, if there would be anything in the future, we require stormwater operation and maintenance agreements that are recorded on the individual parcels.
And this just wasn't done correctly at, I think I saw, 2005 or something?
Well, I, I don't want to say that it was done correctly. That might have been, it might have been done according to
Yeah, then they were on the finished housing.
The procedures that were in place at the time.
Okay.
What I typically recommend in situations like that is that the borough require that a homeowners association be formed and that it be responsible for the common areas such as stormwater ponds. And under the law, under Pennsylvania law, every property can be assessed if the homeowners association doesn't maintain it. Every property can be assessed. So that means that the borough could go in and do the maintenance and then essentially lead every property in the neighborhood for it.
I believe Truesberry Borough is going through that right now with a portion of their new development that's taken place.
And so that's the motivation then for the property owners to properly fund the homeowners association to provide for the maintenance of these stormwater ponds and any other public improvements that you've required.
So is the borough asking them to make an HOA?
You can't.
Can't?
It's a done deal. They're, it's just, I like my development. There is no, there is no HOA. The borough took over the stormwater pond and, you know, it's, it's mowed and.
To answer, to answer that more directly, the time that, and the manner that the HOA is formed is usually provisioned in your land development, subdivision land development ordinance. And so it's at the time and associated with the approval of the land development plan.
And it's normally in your deed. I mean, you normally sign up that you decide you're gonna be part of the homeowners association.
You just said that New Freedom took over on, when did they do that?
1993, boy, something like that. Okay. This isn't something that the borough can walk away from. This is something that has to be done and has to be taken care of. At any rate, any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Your vote is aye. Solicitors report.
In the past month, I have prepared the documents that you've considered tonight. The, the option to purchase the property of One East Franklin Street. We also did a title search. We reviewed the prior deeds and that type of thing. We drafted the option agreement. We drafted an agreement of sale that accompanies the option agreement. So if the option is accepted and if the borough decides to go through with the purchase of the property, the agreement has already been laid out for you. Second thing I did was to work on this taking by eminent domain. So we prepared the resolution for the taking that you adopted along with the exhibits to go with it, which include the plan or the subdivision plan pages that are needed as well as legal description of the lots that you were acquiring. We prepared the declaration of the taking and the notice of the memorandum of filing. All of those will get filed with the court and with the recorder of deeds. And then we've also prepared the petition to file the just compensation, which will be a nominal compensation since there's no market value to the, to the properties. So that was in association with this eminent domain procedure that we followed. The third thing that I did was I researched the amusement tax and as indicated, found that the borough's amusement tax complies with the, what they call the uniformity clause of the Pennsylvania Constitution. So because of that, it was a legal ordinance. And Erica told me it's a good thing since our firm drafted it. Well, thank you for that. So, and, right, so. The other thing that I did was I assisted with the drafting of the information about how to make public comment at the beginning of the meeting of President Bobby Redford this evening. So, so I worked with that. And then the final thing that I did was, as you were aware, we have all been sued by Devin Taylor. So I looked at the docket entries, the federal court, to see what was going on in the case. And what I could tell you was there is a single attorney appointed by the insurance company to represent everybody, including myself, Dave Jones, Doc and Leader, the police, no, I think the police has a separate attorney, but I'm not sure about that. And then each of you are all represented by the same attorney. Each of you are defendants anyway. And he filed a motion to dismiss the complaint. And he filed what's called a brief, which means that he's filed something that gives a legal argument on why legally the, the complaint should be dismissed. And he cites 29 cases, two rules of civil procedure and four statutes in support of that argument. Mr. Taylor did file a brief opposing the motion and so the matter will then be decided by the judge. I think that the matter will be decided by the judge based on whether the judge can view the video at this stage of the proceedings. If the judge can view the video at this stage of the proceedings as part of what they call pleadings, then I think it's likely that the decision will be favorable. Otherwise, it will be deferred until the judge is permitted to consider evidence in the case, which would be in the motion for summary judgment stage. Still be pre-trial, just be the next step rather than this step. But one of those two steps, you know, the case is going to be dismissed because of the, the way that the claims lay and the clear evidence in the case. But that's the stage. So the first volley and first round is now before the court to decide. So probably in the next, probably sometime before the end of the summer, the judge will issue verdict.
Is there, I know you said the end of the summer, is there like a final date that it has to be done before?
No.
Or it's just whenever?
No, it's when the judge can get to it. My, my experience is that federal judges usually decide cases in a couple of months. State courts sometimes take longer, but federal courts tend to run a little faster. So, so that's why I'm predicting maybe Labor Day or before be my, my best guess as to when we'll get a decision. But I don't know, can't predict what the judge is. You know, I mean, if the judge goes on vacation or, you know, gets a backlog, the judges in the federal court handle both criminal and civil proceedings. And so if they get, you know, a large prosecution or something like that that's assigned to this judge, you know, that can delay things. So it's, it's hard to predict. But overall, my experience is that they're, they're a couple of months till they make the decision. So, so that was my activity in the past, since our last meeting.
Anyone have any questions? Managers report.
Okay, everybody has a copy in the packet of the June 2025 managers' report as well as the grant application report for the month. Just a couple of highlights in there. It's obviously, it's been a busy month as we've got quite a few projects in the works. That includes the Bailey Avenue project going into the construction phase as well as the Warwick Bridge, the tree pump station, the continuation of the wastewater treatment plant upgrades and just as well as all of those time of the year, summertime tasks and projects. So that's basically all of the highlights. If anybody has any questions about anything in that report, please let me know, let me know, keep it, keep it short.
Anybody?
I will say, and Andrew, this is something, I don't know if you would handle. I've gotten several, several complaints. Is there anybody here left? From the VFW, about the VFW, about the Thursday night line dancing. The music apparently is extremely loud. Several of those people get up to go to work at three o'clock in the morning and they're going on till 11 o'clock at night. And they said, you know, their walls actually rattled from the music. I don't know if that's something you would take care of, Andrew, as a noise complaint.
That should, that should be a call into Southern Regional Police Department as far as getting somebody out there to address the situation.
We're hoping that it will change because one of the residents did get ahold of, I think he said the quartermaster up there. I just caught that, the email on that two nights ago and I haven't been able to follow up. I was gonna say something to them, just incidentally, that they have a little bit of a problem up there.
Well, we're just here.
I know, that's why I looked out there to see if he was still here, but he left.
Has anybody made a, has anybody made a complaint yet?
I'm making a complaint right now. I didn't know Andrew was not gonna be here this week, so I could make a formal complaint.
Andrew, what is the noise cutoff time in that area? Isn't it 11 o'clock?
I was thinking it's ten, but I'll look that up quick and verify that.
I do know for a fact that I keep the door shut for everything.
Where are they, upstairs?
Yeah.
I don't, it's several of the residents that live next door.
But there's nobody over there.
Those houses aren't vacant, are they?
Very apartments.
The top ones?
Well, somebody that lives in the neighborhood's complaining because of the noise.
Let somebody know what's going on.
Yeah, yeah. Well, he notified the quartermaster. Said if he has any additional problems, he would notify me or the borough. I told him to contact Andrew Schaefer at the borough, gave him the phone number and say, so if nobody's heard anything, apparently it's, we won't know if it's worked out until this Thursday. The next one is. So that's, I have that. The schema report, I would like to defer that schema report. I was able to be in the last schema report via phone call in. I wasn't feeling well. But Stan Walters is here. If I would ask the president's permission to ask Stan report on the current state schema. If you want to hit that button then Stan and turn your mic on.
Thank you very much. Yeah, so you have two reports in front of you. The first one is just a monthly situational report of various things that are going on relative to emergency management in the territory that we cover. South Central York County EMA is a regional EMA that New Freedom Borough joined through intergovernmental agreement. And we cover Glen Rock, Railroad, New Freedom, Truesberry, those boroughs and Truesberry Township. And then the additional report that you got is an after-action report on a disaster recovery project that we led in Glen Rock last month for a couple who experienced a fire. And I thought it was kind of unusual. They weren't back in their home already this year from a fire that was in October. There was a backstory there and it's kind of alluded to in the report. And so we went and helped them out, basically getting their property back in compliance with their borough's weed grass work. Relative to one item from last month, I was looking at your minutes. Now that Mayor Butcher is back in town, he had indicated to you all that he was gonna get more information on the use of the community center as a possible shelter. I will go ahead now facilitate a meeting with the mayor and also some representatives from the York County Office of Emergency Management. And then he'll be able to come back to you and report on, on what the county is trying to do there.
Yeah, great, thank you. Yeah, please let me know, please let me know what they, what dates they have available.
Yeah, I'll work to put that together.
So that you and myself and them can take a look at the facilities.
Any questions from, from the floor?
Do you have anything to add? In the last schema meeting, there was a lot of discussion about Glen Rock and about the, the. the method of their particular stormwater management or lack thereof.
Yeah, so, so everybody is aware that of the five municipalities that schema covers, Glen Rock Borough is kind of built like a bowl. And so you discuss stormwater management here in your borough. Whatever starts in your borough goes to Glen Rock. I mean, it's just, it's the nature of the topography. Shrewsbury sheds all of its water east and west. New Freedom Borough, you are the headwaters of the South Branch or the Kinnorah Creek. It doesn't look like it when you look at where it begins, but that's where it starts. And, and so, for example, last week, we had 2.8 inches of rain. That's what I recorded at my location and my gauge. The, the water at the General Store in Railroad was over the tops of all of the conduits that carry the water down.
That's the little gas station, that's what the General Store is?
The General Store next to the rail trail, okay, next to the, to the borough building, right there at 216 and Captain Bob's. So your creek that starts out was actually flooding the parking lot at their borough building. And what we look for is if it overtops the road and starts crossing over, floods over 216 there, we know that that crest is gonna get to Glen Rock in about 45 minutes. So that's the lead time we have to give them the warning that they're gonna flood. So in Glen Rock, you have a creek that's 30 or 40 feet wide that then gets channeled into an artificial canal that goes underneath the bridge, under North Main Street, behind the fire department, behind Zion Lutheran Church, underwater street, and then it exits the borough going north past the water treatment plant. And then from there, once it gets north of 616, then it widens out again. So I presented to the council there a document from a government agency on how to maintain canals, because there's, to the mayor's point, when I went one night in the middle of the night to go look and see how high the water was rising in the canal, in the channel, there was a lot of vegetation. And anytime you have vegetation, and Andrew, you know, made this point with your project, where you're gonna probably brickbrack the sides of something. If, if you allow vegetation into the channel of a stormwater stream, then you slow down the egress of the water in the channel. That causes a rise in the water level. In the case of an artificial channel like the concrete one that goes through Glen Rock, if vegetation starts growing in the cracks, then it can degrade, it can degrade the canal walls. Eventually, they'll fail. Then you'll have an incursion of dirt and, you know, erosion of the sides of it. So I'm hoping to talk about budgets, to air this point tonight in the budget meeting, that they would look at potentially budgeting some maintenance money for their maintenance department to get down in the, in the channel. Fortunately, they're far enough downstream that nothing that's happening there would impact New Freedom Borough, but it's, because it's part of my responsibility, so.
Can I, can I just add something to that? Stan, you bring up a lot of good points, and part of this project that we're looking at, which starts at Pleasant Avenue and continues, as I mentioned, north into Railroad Borough, is restoring that floodplain so that we're able to spread out any kind of stormwater that's entering Railroad Borough, slow down that velocity. Again, there's no floodplain. It's a channelized stream bank at this point, and that increases velocity and kind of wreaks havoc on Railroad Borough. So if we're able to get this project completed, we're able to restore that floodplain, we can hopefully relieve some of that concern in Railroad Borough as well.
He just answered my question.
And I think, didn't we bring up a subject of, a lot of times we'll have trees that go down, and nobody claims them, nobody fixes them, nobody cuts them up. And we determined that it's the landowner's responsibility to take care of that. And if we see some, some things that are down in that western part of the borough, I think it's our, our responsibility to make it, the landowner's responsibility to remove that, because I know there have been cases when we've had trees, limbs, go down and actually block the bridge at Railroad, which contributes to that additional flooding, as you said, in Railroad. So I think we in our public works, when they're out, need to keep an eye on that. We've got a couple of places where the, the trees are basically only held up by the lines, which nobody will claim, whether they're Verizon, whether they're Comcast, whether they're Med Ed.
None of them are Med Ed.
Nobody, yes, nobody can, I mean, I've got one hanging out in front of my house for four months that nobody will claim, and it's gonna fall down. And when it does, it's gonna swing and take out two cars. And nobody will, you know, take responsibility for it.
So, so we've looked into that and talked to 911, to dispatch. We all drive around the area. Occasionally, we see a tree that's leaning on the lines, and it's invariably the phone line, because if it, if it interacts with the electric line, it's gonna spark and catch fire, and that will evoke a response. But Verizon and Comcast do not operate normally tree removal. Med Ed is the only utility that, that maintains tree crews, whether they're contracted or their own. They dispatch them out, and, you know, they turn off the power, they, they will take down trees. An example of this is, a few years ago, there was a tree that was actually on the Snyder Farm property up the steep, steep bank across from the wastewater treatment plant. The area up there, there's like apartments and stuff up there now, but we refer to it as the old Snyder Farm. And that tree came, came down on the cable line and the telephone lines that were on that side of, of the bank. It was just on this side of the first overpass, you know, the rail trail overpass, the tunnel. And that's a, a major school bus route. It's how emergency vehicles do get from, from the Shrewsbury towards Glen Rock if they need to. And Comcast wouldn't come out because they don't have tree crews. Verizon wasn't gonna do anything about it. None of the lines were broken, so there was no service interruption. So for the utilities, it did offer, it didn't represent any kind of liability to their customers because there was no break in service. But it was, you know, clearly deterrent to the road because even though the tree was still being held up by the wires, there was no way to get underneath it. It was too low for a vehicle to pass. So it took 24 hours before Pendon actually brought a specialized crew in from another part of the state. And the, the liability for anybody who would try to tackle it would be if you cut the tree and make it worse by severing the utility lines, like if you break the, the phone lines, Verizon wants you to pay to repair it. But Pendon came with a claw, a big grapple, and they grappled the trunk of the tree and lifted it off and then set it down in the road and then bucked it into short lengths and pushed it off on the side. So, but that meant that we lost the use of that roadway. So in, in checking on, you know, who all really would have been responsible for that, it's the property owner, the tree is the, where the base of the tree is, that should be watching for trees that are vulnerable to going down and doing something about it before they fall, before they fall. But it's hard to get, it's hard to get landowners to, to recognize that, so.
Thank you for your report. Any questions?
I know we've talked about Nen's training in the past, and I found it in the Borough Minutes dated back to 2006. I brought it back to this council several times since 2022. What action can this council take? What's your direction to get this council invested in moving forward to serve the community good?
Well, so there's annually a training that's offered by a county that is for municipal officials. It's usually offered in February. So I asked county if they would be willing, if we could get together a critical mass of elected officials down in the southern part of the county, not, not just my schema territory, maybe also in Hopewell, North Hopewell, and so on. And they're willing to do that. So right now, I'm, I'm working to try to work with Todd, who's the secretary for schema, and maybe send out a doodle poll, which is like where you can tell what dates are good for you. But if, if we fail at being able to do that, next February is the elected, and I don't have a date right now, but you can anticipate that's about when it would be. And that class is offered at 120 Davy's Drive in York at the 911 facility. And in addition to that, there are, are online training offered by FEMA. These courses, you sit in a computer and take them. They're a couple hours long each. And when you complete it, you take a little exam, and you get a certificate that says you've completed that course. And they're referred to as ICS 100, 200, 700, and 800. Those are the four. It's recommended that all elected officials take those. The reason why is by doing that, you're gonna understand a language of response. So you will, as an elected official, you are involved. If something happens here in New Freedom and the press is here, and for example, you want, you know, they want some official to make a public statement, you'll have more of the language of what the fire chief is saying to you. Well, we have this many units, they're doing this, they're doing that. And it's referred to as the National Incident Management System and Incident Command System, and so on. And it's part, that's also part of something called COOP, Continuity of Operations. And that's another piece of the, the training for elected officials. Now, the manual for the class and the COOP manual are online at, at York County's website under the Emergency Management section. So there's nothing to prevent any of you from, from going and looking at that manual even, you know, now at your leisure before the class. And what, what the benefit of the class would be is the emergency managers usually attend that, and they'll have a tabletop exercise as part of it, a scenario where we can all get together and kind of walk through what the process of managing an incident is, not necessarily from, I mean, we don't have to tell the chief what to do to fight a fire. He takes hundreds of hours, as do all the volunteers at Rose, to know how to fight a fire, how to form a task force and go in with a two-inch line, you know, what nozzle to use, what spray angle to use. We don't have to learn tactics, but it's good to be able to kind of be on their wavelength when it comes to understanding the, the language of the response and, and managing it from an official standpoint. What, what information are you giving the rest of the citizenry? And how are you, how are you addressing their concerns?
I would challenge all my council members here to take your job seriously that you were elected to do, and maybe come together and come down here and do it on the big screen together or individually at home. It's important.
I think it's also mandatory.
It is highly, highly recommended.
I forget, I forget what the exact wording of Title 35 is, but that's the, the legal, the part of PA law is Title 35 that tells you as elected officials what your responsibilities are.
I think the minimum is 100, 700.
I messed up and did all four.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, and I have previously shared all that information with council on what's required and how to go about getting those certifications. I've already gone through the process years ago to get all four certifications. It's not, it's not difficult. It is time-consuming, but it does give you an awareness of incident management. I can, I know I shared those emails a couple times, and the links, I can share that again with the council.
Is there somebody here that wanna take that up? Have you all do that?
Yeah, I'll do it.
He'll leave it up? Andy said he'll leave it up.
Yeah, we can do it down, right down here. I've already got two.
The app deck screen.
Yeah. Bring my laptop.
But before the year's end.
Can I ask you another question, Stan, before you leave? I know there's a lot of discussion, and this is gonna be a big money vendor for our fire department, EMS. Where are we and what have you heard lately about the new radio systems?
Well, there is no new radio system, okay?
New radios.
The, the original radios that everybody bought as part of the last upgrade, those radios are simply going out of support, kind of like a computer, the operating system is not supported anymore, so.
You can't get support for Windows 10 in your hair.
So the EMA radios are not, I mean, your fire department, you know, the chief reported 53 calls last month. They use them very heavily. So they're looking at, as, as these current radios break down, they will no longer be able to be repaired. They're gonna have to replace them. The EMA radios, the cache that we have that serves schema, we use them very lightly. I mean, we don't, we hardly ever use them because EMA doesn't really, you know, activate all that often. So there is no wholesale replacement required. It's just a matter of as they break down, they'll just have to be replaced.
But you're looking at now currently about $5,800 per?
I haven't, I haven't even looked at what the cost is.
I think we looked into it, and it was around $5,800 per unit. Now, figure, Rose, if they have to replace each one of theirs, I thought it was because of the system change that we had discussed before, but you're looking at $5,800 a unit. And we need two, personally, we need two, because we've only got one.
Right, but until you're, you've got one here, until that radio breaks, there's no requirement to, to replace it. It's just that if it breaks down, once the contracted repair period ends, it can't be repaired, so.
We have to be ready for that in the next budget season, so.
Yeah, if you wanna start, you know, put a sinking fund into your budget and start accruing some money toward a radio replacement or, or two, then that's up to you.
We already have, we'll just have to add radios to the.
Yeah, yeah. I would appreciate if council would consider that the next budget season, which we're, believe it or not, it's coming up.
Andrew sent the email a couple, couple weeks ago asking for suggestions for the budget.
Okay, thank you so much, appreciate it.
Okay, thank you.
Well, that's a suggestion. We need to.
Chief gave a recognition letter award to Officer Castillo for his lifesaving efforts in May on 8/3 with the entrapment and the lifesaving efforts that he gave. He stopped in the ambulance and was able to save the man's life. Stewartstown had a burglar, he was caught. Officer Castillo and Bodyton Jr. were there to catch him, probably in the China Walk. He'd broken in there, so that was great to solve that. He'd broken in there, so that was great to solve that. I believe he was responsible for one or two other burglaries there in the Stewartstown area. The flock continues to do its job. Recently, got a hit, stole a gun, warrants, bad tag, people from Baltimore, 2 a.m. inch looking to rent apartments in the area. So that was a good hit from that. Officer Waugh, he does a lot of our community service. He was able to get donations for a $6,000 e-bike in just a couple weeks. So it's going to be exciting to be able to see him traverse our area on that e-bike with our communities. And we are going to receive two shields. We had talked about that some months back. We're going to receive two of them to try it out before they are ordered, which will be ordered soon.
Will they be able to apply for any grant money for the shields?
I do not believe so, I haven't heard of that. We're getting some donations.
Okay, thank you. Engineer report?
I have a request on the Arrow Report. Everything is gray, and then when they do something, it's black. My eyesight is hard to differentiate between just the muted gray and the black. If they can change it to a red and a black, a blue and a black, just because you've really got to sit there and look at it.
I'll ask that along to them.
Thank you.
Do they send that to you, Andy, as a PDA, or do they do it as a doc?
I'm sorry, which report are you talking about?
The Arrow Report.
It says a PDF.
Oh, okay, so you can't personally change the color?
Well, I could, but I'm not going to manipulate someone else's report.
Yeah, we're talking about changing color, but...
But I will pass that along to them to make that change before they provide the July report.
Appreciate it, because I also have a little bit of problem differentiating that.
Same too. Any other comments on the engineering reports? Water system? Wastewater? Violations? Zoning enforcement?
Wait a minute.
I'm missing photos. I know you were changing the format and so forth.
Yeah, that's correct. We... We're still working on that format, and if the photos are something council would like to see moving forward, then we'll make that change. We just didn't want to produce the document that we had there the first time. That was too many pages and not enough information. So what we can do is work on this to just get pictures of the violation and the current condition if there is nothing.
Yeah, it's good information here, but yeah, the photo attached would be...
Okay.
Andrew? Can you make an attachment on the packet? Like a link to the picture?
Absolutely.
Andrew, could you please add 20 South Constitution onto the report? You and I have discussed it, could you please?
There's no violation letter sent, so I can't... I can't just add that to the report. I mean, I can update council as well as update the information that I provided to you, which is I've been speaking with the individual that's looking for this property.
It's a zoning violation, and I feel that he should be receiving something because of that or the current owner.
So who is the current owner, Kim?
Well, you told me who it was. It was his, what, his mother?
No.
Aunt?
What are we talking about? What's the zoning violation? What's going on?
I don't know. It's a zoning violation moving to the IMPC for a complaint.
No, wait, no, stop, Kim. You're talking about a zoning violation and you're talking about a property maintenance violation. Those are two separate portions of the code of ordinances.
But doesn't it all fall under zoning?
If it's a zoning violation, it has to do with the use. If it's a property maintenance issue, it has to do with the upkeep of the property.
Well, it's kind of both. It's dilapidated, it's fallen down, the windows are out, squirrels and birds are living in the house. It hasn't been lived in for seven years since the owner died. And it's a neighborhood disaster, worse than what you guys had on McCurley. Take McCurley times 10. And I'm tired of it, looking like that and dropping the property value on my house and my neighbor's house. And we've been discussing it now, and I know it's... We've given him a lot of leeway in him purchasing it, but it's always next month, next month, next month, and nothing happens. And I feel it should be listed under a code enforcement violation, don't you, Andrew?
Well, let's be clear here. The information that has been provided to the Borough Office is the same information that has been verified by the attorney handling the property transfer. So it's not that this information is being falsified. It's legitimate information. They're trying to go through the process to obtain the property out of the estate. But that was a process in itself where they couldn't get the executor of the wills to even do anything, sign all home documents. So I'm not sure, I mean, we can send a letter to the last owner of record, but I'm not sure where that's going to get us.
Is the property in a sale situation now?
All the potential buyer needs is a payoff statement from the mortgage company, and he will purchase the property, and he has already agreed to make all the... All the improvements that are required, which is replacement windows, which is a new roof, all everything that we've been discussed. And again, I'm not just taking his word for it. I called the attorney, spoke to the attorney, verified the information. They're going through the proper process. It's just taking time. I can waste my time sending letters to the last owner of record, but it's not going to get us anywhere.
So what's a reasonable amount of time to wait to see if this is going to actually go through?
About seven years.
Well, it sounds like you're in the home stretch now.
We've been in the home stretch for two years.
Oh, really? It's been that long?
Yeah. All right, well, I would just ask you to keep, you know, me apprised of what the situation is on that as a courtesy. Any new information that you get, because it's, you know, it's basically a vacant house, and it's been a vacant house for seven years, and it's getting worse by the day.
Understood, and we will continue to follow up and push as much as we can, but the property is in limbo at this point.
I appreciate your efforts, thank you.
Any questions on subdivision, land development? Recreation?
All right, everybody has a copy. Tom or anything, does anybody have any specific questions? If anybody does, as usual, just go ahead and give me a call or a text, whatever the case may be.
Are you going to announce that our rec director has resigned?
I guess you just did.
I think it's important that the council know that.
I didn't know, I've got community members coming to me, who wasn't informed, asking me.
You could have called, sent me a text, emailed.
Well, I shouldn't have to. If something like that happens, it should go out to the council to let the whole council know what's happening, not just specific people. When's your last day?
Thursday.
I believe it's Thursday, there is some vacation time, I think that's being used. As far as next steps, I think Andrew has some meetings scheduled with the state to find out next steps.
Does this jeopardize the grant at all?
Uh, that's...
Yeah.
Go ahead, Andrew.
Yeah, well, I've already had conversations with DCNR about next steps. It does not jeopardize any of the funding that the Borough has received or will receive for that position. We are working to basically update all of the job advertisements that we had previously used. We have to go through the same process and have that approved by DCNR. Those measures are already in place, ready to go. So at this point, in conversation with DCNR, we're going to wait a few weeks as a lot of the recreation employees and people in the field are pretty much ingrained in any kind of summer programming. It's a busy time of the year, so if we give a little week, a couple weeks yet, we'll probably have a little bit more people apply and have a better pool of candidates that are actually available and out there looking for other positions. So, you know, at this point, there's not a lot on as far as scheduling, but we're working through those with Shrewsbury Township as far as the fields getting any programming. So at this point, we're just moving forward.
Do we have anyone to fill in, to answer calls?
Not at this point, no.
Where are we with the programs that have already been scheduled for the end of the... Through the end of the summer?
As I just said, everything will be covered. As far as the summer playground, that is, I believe that's finished up, correct, Ryan?
Yes, that is correct.
So there's a summer concert series coming up in the middle of August, and then there's just a couple of routine classes and programs that don't need a lot of administration.
Most of those were already taken by volunteers. I think Donnie's doing the concert. I'll be at Shrewsbury Township for one of the speaker series. So other rec members, through the course of events, have volunteered their time. Just to be... It doesn't have to be at every single one already. So I do believe that just about everything is covered.
This is why we have a separate recreation board. This is part of their responsibilities as well.
When was the resignation letter dated?
It was dated, I believe, last Saturday, last Saturday or Sunday.
So she's not even given a week's notice?
When is it dated?
Was there a requirement for her to give so many weeks' notice when she was hired?
She's taken a lot of vacation, she still has vacation left, and it's just a little over a year.
This is a topic that if the rec board has concerns, they would discuss and bring to Shrewsbury Township and New Freedom Borough, but New Freedom Borough does not get the control of that employee.
I'd announce about controlling the employee, New Freedom Borough tax dollar goes to cover the employment of this person.
I just made a statement, Erica.
I'm asking a question.
If you have concern, that needs to be taken to the regional recreation board and discussed at that point.
I'm asking the chairman of the board sitting next to me.
This is not a rec meeting.
It doesn't need to be.
It does.
I'm asking a question.
Then you can either reach out to me individually or come to one of our meetings.
I'm in a council meeting that our taxpayer funds go to fund. I'm asking a question, and that is completely legitimate.
And this is a rec matter.
Doesn't matter if it's a rec matter. Funds from citizens of this borough go to pay for that...
What specifically is your question?
That she's just been here a little over a year, I know she has taken vacation. How does she even have more vacation?
So you know all of her vacation time taken?
It's a good question, but I don't. I... That really isn't going to... That can't be discussed here. It's not a topic that...
It's personnel.
It's personnel, and... But it is a good question.
I agree, but this...
And absolutely anything with rec can be discussed here. These are our taxpayer dollars, period, and I don't know why you wouldn't want to discuss it.
Should we just give it to the rec meeting?
Well, I think this is a perfect time to investigate that this even continue, and if we go back to a volunteer...
We already know that you don't want it to continue, you've made that perfectly clear.
It's been in the red, it's been a money loser.
It's noted.
It's been a money loser, and it's going to be a bigger money loser going forward. That's why the last one failed. All right, we're going to move on now. Yes. Business development, do you have anything on EMS and fire? I think we decided to table until next...
EMS and fire?
Probably DCED portion of it.
Oh, that, yeah, that part of it, we're definitely going to table, because I've got a meeting coming up on Thursday with the both fire departments, fire Andy and Ms. Did I have something else?
I just want to back up a minute and let Brian know that I picked up a child from the summer playground program several days. She had all... All the other kids coming out of there were just talking about what a great time they had, how much fun they had, they want to go back. So if you could take that back to rec, I would appreciate it.
Howard, Derek, can you please forward me the resignation letter? Thank you. You good?
I had something, but now I can't.
I don't think there's anything, anything else. Housing, rental housing occupancy ordinance committee is dissolved.
Since when?
Just that. Correspondence, VFW, Yomnik, breaking ceremony invite, Andrew, would you? Do you have something, is there something? Oh, I'm sorry.
No, it was just addressed to council, so I just provided that in the packet.
So that's on July 24th, and it starts at 1:00. And the mayor will be speaking.
Mr. President, could I back up if you're interested in noting? I couldn't find it. The number of EMS calls for the month, I generally do report that and where they are. One in Cudores, five in Glen Rock, assists, eight in Hopewell Township, 18 in Maryland, 18 in New Freedom, five in North Hopewell, three in Railroad. Stewartstown assists 11, they were probably out on other calls. Shrewsbury Borough, 44. Here we go, Shrewsbury Township, you want to talk about, we were talking about that DCED. Here you go, they're 70 out of all of our 186 calls. Two in Springfield Township, one other. We only missed, out of 186 calls, we had to miss 10 calls and have substitutions come in for those. So total calls handled last month by EMS was 107. So total calls handled last month by EMS was 176. And I was amazed at how many cardiac arrests there were in our area last month. I don't know whether it had to do with heat or, you know, we had a lot of heat exhaustion, a lot of fainting, people working outside. I remind you that please, you know, we're, we've still got the last summer left. If you're going to go out and work, I know you have gardens, hydrate. It's very important to hydrate. I know I had a situation over the weekend where we were working outside, I didn't, and the next thing I knew, I was pretty much on my knees because I was cramping up and did not take the time to do what I knew I should and that's mainly hydrating in these hot days and it's humidity. So please, public service announcement. Thank you.
Appreciate it. I do want to point out that under our current EMS structure, I guess you could say, the fact that Shrewsbury Township has more, that everyone pays based on...
That's correct. We had that meeting last year, that everyone pays for the budget of the EMS for the following year based on their percentage of calls.
Right. There's a York County Planning Commission letter from senior planner. We need to do anything with this, Andrew?
No, this is just the final approval that's needed from York County Planning Commission in regards to the regional comprehensive plan update. So this would be their consideration, their recommendation for approval. And if you recall, the hope is that all municipalities then approve during their August meeting.
And that, those meetings are open to the public, so if we wanted to, we could attend, correct?
Yeah, if you look at the third paragraph there, you just need to make sure that you email them ahead of time so that they can send you the invite, but they are absolutely open to the public.
Through Zoom or in person? Or either?
Yeah, it's, it's through Zoom.
Okay, thank you.
I think it's through Zoom for everybody.
Okay, that makes sense. Thank you.
Public comment for non-agenda items?
I don't know if it's agenda items or not, but for the infrastructure committee, who is on the infrastructure committee?
That would be...
Dennis?
Iself, Dennis and...
Can we have a meeting sometime second, first week of August?
Sure. Subject?
Infrastructure. Sadly, I can't...
That's a good subject.
...get ideas where infrastructure is, because all I hear is the infrastructure's failing, it's taxing our infrastructure, this and that. That way you guys know what the issues are.
I understand.
Also, sorry for the comments about the equipment, but every time we come up here for a piece of equipment, and it's going to be ongoing the next budget year, I got a 21-year-old dump truck over there that's nickeling by me every time I start. Equipment does not last forever. Most municipalities won't keep the equipment for 10 years. They get rid of it after 10 years. But when I come to the council or Andy comes to the council and says, hey, we would like to get this, it's not because we just want something new, it's because we need it. And I give him a business case. I give him all the pros and cons. I do my job. He comes to you and asks for that piece of equipment. The police get whatever they want. Fires get a new truck. I'm stuck over there with 1987 piece of equipment that should have been gone years ago. So at 2:00 in the morning, I will bring a shovel and I'll ask you to help me if I can't get the pieces of equipment that we need to do our job, because public works seems to be at the bottom of the barrel every time, every time.
I want to point out that you've had every piece of equipment that you've asked for council has given you.
I understand that, but I get bashed every time. And I'm not going to sit here and lie to you about a piece of equipment like predecessors years ago lied about equipment. I won't do that to you. I'll be 100% honest with you. I don't want to see the taxpayers spend money that they don't need to, so I'm not going to ask if it's not warranted.
And what's it going to cost if you have to have an emergency and you have to go out and rent a piece of equipment?
Well, if I got to call a company to come in here, you got to foot a huge, huge bill.
Right.
Huge bill.
We don't, we don't have the same relationship with Kinsley that we used to.
And that's a good thing.
I'm asking basic questions and the business case that you're giving to Andrew is not making it to the council. So I don't take it personally. I mean, if something needs to be fixed and we'll take precedence to the truck, when I ask questions, there was rust in the bed. It had 57,000, 58,000 miles. That is all I was told. Well, if there's rust in the bed, come to me with three estimates, three estimates to get that fixed, to get whatever it is fixed. Come with a business case of why it's needed, not just wanting a new truck. That's all that's coming to me. So I have questions when I see trucks all day long and I think I even told you that day, my husband's truck has 340,000 miles on it.
Highway miles, Erica. It's a big deal.
Over 100 miles a day.
Highway miles.
Two square...
Not plowing snow.
Two square mile a row, okay?
And it plowed snow for 15 years. Andrew, could you set up a meeting with the infrastructure committee and Public Works for early August? Can you send out an e-bike or something?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Not a problem.
Again, it's not personal. There's just no justification that makes it to me, no business case to warrant it. That's why I ask the questions and sometimes get the answers, sometimes don't, because, you know, you got no offhand support, so.
So that's, that's just not true, but it's not worth arguing about.
All right, let's stop. Yes, yes, sir.
Yeah, I didn't hear a mention, but isn't there like 68,000 of that through the grant?
Yes, yeah, 68,000 is covered by a grant. The rest was budgeted and we will get something back.
I just wanted to point that out.
Grants aren't free. They're government cheese, there's ties to them, there's requirements for them. So I know people talk about grants a lot, but, you know, there are... And Andrew, just a rebuttal to you, I would be asking the questions I ask, which I believe are pretty basic if I already had the answers to them, so I...
That's not true. You've asked questions multiple times that you already get the answer to.
It was, the day, it was, it's reached its useful life. That's what I got with how many years it is. That's all I got.
The neighbor? No. I know it's a...
Is this case like that also for replacement cars?
Yes, thank you. And the... Any more than just... About the, about having a business plan, when you, when somebody comes to you and says, we have a 1987...
Oh, wait a minute, wait, wait, wait.
1950, but wait a minute, you can't have it both ways.
Wait, wait! I have to turn off the recorder. This is being a jerk.
You say in the budget, we're not, we voted on them individually, but right now you say we voted on it in the budget, so either, you know, you can't have it both ways.
Well, it was voted on in the budget.
Yeah, but it's the budget time, you said.